Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with ever changing justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yes, Mayor. We have a special meeting running concurrent with the originally posted meeting. We had one additional item that we added, which will be added at six point five, which is the update related to airport days.
Okay, we have a approval of the agenda with the changes.
I'll make my question that we approve the agenda with changes.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosper.
Hi.
Mayor Tim Ramirez.
Hi.
Councilman Hedgecock.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Hi.
Yes, we can hear you.
Alright, alright.
Councilman Schindler.
Hi.
Mayor Horn.
And I. Okay, we're gonna move on to awards, presentations, appointments, proclamations. Our first item or only item we have is presentation of the results from the community survey conducted by Gene Bregman and Associates.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this was a community survey that hi- and we have the results tonight from the public opinion survey conducted by Gene Bregman and Associates on behalf of the city of Colinga. Um, this was in relation to the preparation of measure J, and this was in the council approved the last council meeting. And the total of a hundred and three likely voters, um, in the November twenty four, twenty twenty four election were interviewed online and by cell and landline telephone during the period of August twenty second through August twenty fourth. And, uh, we'll compare the results with those from the survey they completed back in two thousand eighteen when the original, uh, measure was passed. So, I start off with kind of an overview. I provided it up there for the public to see as well, and then I provided all the council a copy of the, uh, the memo that was prepared by Gene Bregman. And as was true in the survey in two thousand eighteen, uh, most people living in, uh, uh, most people like living in Colinga. Uh, their evaluation of the overall jobs being done by city government and the city council also are generally positive and similar to those given six years ago. Uh, specifically fire and police protection service, as well as recreation and park maintenance service remain quite positive. Uh, local street road repair maintenance is not seen, was not seen as positivity positively as it was true in two thousand eighteen. Um, residents believe much remains to be done to attract businesses and jobs in Colinga as well. Um, nonetheless, uh, Colinga voters say that the city has a need for more money in general and for its many specific services. So, while the majority of people remember the two thousand eighteen tax measure, just under one third knew that there was another measure on the ballot in November of twenty twenty four concerning the sales tax. Uh, this lack of awareness leads to a vote that shows the sales tax renewal to be in jeopardy. However, once people learn that this year's measure J does not involve any new taxes, but it's just an extension of the existing sales tax, prospects for the twenty twenty four measure J greatly improve. So, after learning about how the two thousand eighteen's measures, uh, money has been spent and the losing of one percent sales tax would mean, support shows some additional strength. So, knowing that it's not a tax increases key to the election. So, that's kind of what the conclusion was from the, uh, results. So, we'll kind of go through each of the summary results, uh, based on the questions that were asked. Um, and if the council has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Uh, if there are any follow-up questions I can ask of Gene, I can definitely reach out to him, just unfortunately scheduling wise, they run out of time. So, the first question, uh, had was similar proportions of people think Colinga is an excellent or good place to live in both ser- in both surveys. So, more people like living in Colinga among renters and men under fifty years of age. So, that's kind of what we find in here. But it was pretty much fifty-nine excellent to good in terms of living in Colinga, and I think in two thousand eighteen it was sixty-five percent. Uh, one of the other questions was opinions of the job being done by Colinga city government and by the city council. Uh, they're generally positive and show little change from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-four, which excellent to good, forty-seven percent based both in two thousand twenty-four and two thousand eighteen, uh, in relation to city government and in two thousand twenty-four and two thousand eighteen's a difference of a percentage point, uh, relation to the job of the city council. Um, and then still a high percentage of only fair as well. Question number three, uh, related to, uh, fire protection services, uh, recreation and park maintenance, local streets and roads, police protection services, and attracting businesses to Colinga. Um, higher ratings were given to most services by renters, uh, those aware of the upcoming ballot measure and those registered, um, as either Republican, Independence, or a minor party. Um, in addition, younger men under fifty were more positive towards recreation and parks maintenance and street and road repair maintenance. Um, so in both surveys, fire protection services were given the most positive job rating by voters. Um, three of the other four city services received similar ratings in both surveys. Only recreation and parks maintenance had declined its ratings, although still positive. Um, and then attracting businesses and jobs to Colinga was not rated well in either survey. In terms of number four, uh, the question, and I'll actually, I noticed on this, on the result, it doesn't actually ask the question. Uh, so I'll actually put in the question, which is, uh, it says, please tell me how you would rate the job being done by the city of Colinga and providing the following services to rent city residents as excellent, good, fair, or poor. Um, and that actually is off by one question, so I apologize. That'd be question number five. So, generally speaking, would you say that the city of Colinga has a great need for more money, some need, a little need, or real, or no real need for more money? And as was true in two thousand eighteen, most voters today say that the city needs more money. Um, great or some need is ninety-two, uh, wait, in two thousand eighteen was ninety-two percent, in two thousand twenty-four it's eighty-two percent. So, from two-thirds to nearly nine in ten voters said the city had at least some need for more money for each of the six services, which is attracting businesses and jobs at Colinga, local streets and roads, police protection services, recreation and park maintenance, fire protection services, and enforcing city codes that require residents to maintain their property and prevent unsightly and/or dangerous situations to occur. So, question number six. Which now, they're all over here. So, while the majority of people remember the two thousand eighteen sales tax measure, just thirty-one percent were aware of the twenty twenty-four measure to extend the tax. So, awareness of the two thousand eighteen measure was higher among those who had lived in Colinga more than twenty years and those who have children in their households. So, awareness of the current measure was higher among those who said they would vote in favor of it. Uh, those who remember the two eighteen measure, uh, the two thousand eighteen measure, registered Republicans, those with children and men under the age of fifty. So, the seventh, uh, item was when participants voted for the new measure, for the new measure J that will appear on the ballot this November, the vote was split forty-four yes and forty-two no. After they were specifically told the new measure would not increase taxes, but just continue the current taxes we have already been paying, support rose to sixty percent with thirty-four opposed. One-third and the final test vote after participants learned about how the current tax money had been used since two thousand eighteen and what would be lost if it were not renewed, sixty-one percent said they would favor and thirty-six said they would oppose. On to number eight. Uh, majority of people said that each of six ways that the city had spent the sales tax money since two thousand eighteen was very important. Most important was the purchase of the uninterrupted power supply to ensure that communication services are not dropped during the emergency power outage. Um, while this was a one-time expense, the others were ongoing expenses related to fire, police, paying fair wages to employees and establishing a financial reserve as a safety net for the city. As you can see, I think on the chart, uh, chart eight kind of breaks down the different items that were listed in terms of, uh, purchases and also the additional services that have been provided with the initial, uh, series of measure J. So, in, uh, among eight possible reductions in city services that could occur, um, if the sales tax is not renewed, four were said to be very serious by survey participants with all four related to police and fire services. These four were lose, uh, these four, losing four recently added police officers and all police reserve and fire reserve positions, as well as three full-time battalion fire chiefs, plus closing the police department investigation units. The other items were also important to many, but not as many as the police and fire related items. So, you'll see the percentages of importance related to those items. And with that, that's the conclusion of the summary, uh, of the report. So, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Counsel.
Yeah, I have one.
Good, good.
Uh, so, so it's, it pretty much shows that awareness, that it's an extension is a problem. So, do we have a plan to address that citywide? I mean, I know that they explained it here and changed their minds, but still a lot of people out there.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's gonna be, you know, the associations, those folks that are gonna be boots to the ground. Uh, those will be the folks that will be out there, you know, advocating and ensuring that that's the case. Um, you know, unfortunately, we're not able to be the ones, you know, to be the ones to advocate for and have to remain neutral. But the, this is, this is good information for the folks that are, that are out there, either advocating for the measure to pass.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So, we do have some information on that. Uh, there is a workshop on the measure J that's gonna be on September eighteenth, uh, I believe at noon. And is that gonna be at, at Tech Center or here?
No, it should be at the Oak's Lodge, right? Scott, Scott.
Oak's Lodge.
What, what?
Oh, it's. I guess it's not open to the public. Okay, any more questions? Okay, we'll move on to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public recognized by the mayor should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no actions will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will refer to staff for a follow-up and report. Uh, citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by five P M. On the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record, however they will not be read. We have anybody that would like to come up and speak. Chuck.
Hello, city council, everybody else, Chuck Gane, longtime resident of Colinga. Um, I feel that more people should come up and say the positive things that's happening here in town. I just wanna give a quick shout-out to our police department, our fire department, public works, wherever Eric's at. And just tell them that they did an amazing job when we had that gas leak. They came out, they secured the area, they got all the kids out of the local school right there, and they, they just did a top-notch job, and nobody passed them, passed them on the back. When they do a good job, they just complain about all the bad stuff, let's say some good stuff once in a while. So, the police department, fire department, and public works have really been stepping up and doing a good job. So, I just wanted to say thank you to Sean and his crew, the fire chief, and then Eric, if you're listening. So, that was it. So, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Mary, Mary.
Mary Jones. Hi, council. This was not premeditated, like we didn't get together on this. I just want everybody to know that with the newspaper, I am making a conscious effort to find things to highlight that are positive things, positive people, positive events that have happened, and just, uh, really going for it aggressively. So, I would encourage all of you, if you know something wonderful that happened, please let me know. I get a million bad things, and I already, I'm doing a story on our quarterback this year at high school. I've got that in the works. I found some high school students being happy, normal kids just the other day riding their bikes, which I thought was phenomenal. And so, anytime you see, not anytime, but you know what I mean, look for that good stuff. If you've got a relative or whatever, just let me, just send it to our email, and I would love to highlight that. I want people to feel good about Colinga, and looking at the pie chart there, with how many people that said Colinga was a decent place to live, that was encouraging. So, good job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Scott, Scott.
Good evening, council and staff. Scott in the Colinga chamber. I just wanted to, uh, mention that September eighteenth event, it's a chamber mixer for chamber members, local business partners. Um, so when I said supposedly events, we're providing lunch to them, it will be at the Elks, and the sole purpose of it is to educate them on the facts on measure J, push the fact that it's an extension, not a new tax. Uh, and what, again, pros and cons, what will lose and what is benefited. Um, our business partners are the ones who see the community every day. And so, we're trying to get them on board to help put a flyer in the window or something that says I support extension of measure J, ask me why type thing. So, when people go into their businesses, you're supporting that? Well, yeah, but this is why. You know, so that's our goal, is to help get the word out that way. Uh, so that will be happening September eighteen. Obviously, September twenty ninth is the airport show. Uh, we've had the pleasure of working with Mercedes and Sean and some of the city council on that, excited for that. Um, October fifth at the parking wreck, they have their down syndrome walk from one to three P M. If anybody's able to go, it means a lot to the kids to see you out there. I know Chief is having an open house on the twelfth of Oc- or October. And then we have October fifteenth at West Coast College at six o'clock is our candidates' night. Um, where it's not a debate, it's just an open forum where community members have the opportunity to speak and ask questions of anyone who's running for public office who's able to attend. So, there will be information coming out on that as well. And then obviously, October nineteenth is our next, chamber's next event, the Colinga Fest, so. Got a lot coming up in the next seven weeks. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Saying no, council? Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Public hearings. We have two items tonight. First one is introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance eight six eight, city-initiated text amendment Z T A twenty-four dash zero three related to gyms, vehicles, washing facilities, and drive-throughs. Sean.
Thank you. Uh, mayor and council tonight, uh, is the introduce, introduction and waving of the first reading of ordinance eight sixty-eight. Um, the council, uh, proposed to make some changes. Um, it seems very random in these mul- these different topics, but, uh, staff's consolidated some of the, uh, the changes that have been recommended by the council as an initiation of a zoning text amendment. One related to gymnasiums, um, vehicle washing facilities, and then drive-through facilities. Um, first is an update to the definitions of a gym and fitness center um, to include, uh, this use classification in the manufacturing district, uh, manufacturing business light districts, which are our light industrial districts, with additional criteria limiting outdoor activities during certain hours. Uh, the ordinance would permit gymnasiums in the M B L zone designation by right with the restriction that there shall be no outdoor activity between the hours of ten P M and six A M if the property is adjacent to a residential district. Um, as it relates to vehicle washing facilities, um, it's an amendment to the vehicle washing facility's land use classification into two categories, one for self-serve automated facilities versus like hand washing and detail services, which would include like tenting. Um, in addition, the ordinance would allow, uh, hand washing and detail facilities as permitted by right in commercial zones, subject to local, state, and regulations, and any additional development regulations that are included in the ordinance. Uh, the curtain code requires the issuance of a conditional use permit for all vehicle washing facilities, but it was the understanding that with additional development regulations would be able to cover the certain conditions that would be applied for a longer drawn-out permitting process for these types of facilities. And then lastly, uh, council requested to remove the prohibitions on drive-through facilities in the general commercial zoning district, which is currently prohibited. Um, this would expand where drive-through facilities are permitted in the city, considering many restaurants are moving to a more drive-through model due to the changes in customer behaviors. So, it's really kind of adapting to that customer. Um, so with that, I have attached a copy of the ordinance, so the ordinance language is there. Um, and if there's any changes or requests that the council may have, we can go ahead and do that, and again, mayor, this is a public hearing, if the, uh, public may have any comments.
Yeah, at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public, if anybody has any questions.
Um, hold on. Quick question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, if we wanna make some changes, uh, to that, would we do it before the public hearing or during the public hearing, or how would council interact with that?
It would, it, whatever you guys would like to do, if you'd like to get comments from the council members first, Mayor, and then you can open to the public.
We'll do that.
If there's any potential changes.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we do it legitimately, because I do have a couple of changes, and I don't want to miss the window, that's all.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close the, the public hearing part and allow council to. I'm gonna go ahead and close the, the public hearing part and allow council to figure this out, and then we'll open it back up to the public. Go ahead.
All right, appreciate that. So, I, I've done a lot of soul-searching on the portion, uh, on both of these, listening to the public, um, thinking to myself about this stuff on the ordinance, um, that has been put in specifically, uh, you know, to the mitigating factors that have been put in, um, with gyms. And so then I thought, started thinking about, well, what mitigating factors should we be putting in for the, the washing facilities as well? Some of those things revolve around, um, runoff water, uh, blocking the public right-ofways. Uh, as sometimes, uh, people do these washings in alleyways, they do them in other places where, you know, you don't want, um, the public right-ofway to be blocked, and then also dust control. And so I was just wondering if there was a way that we could, um, include those, and then also, since I just heard about the times, you know, the times is also a big deal, so maybe include a time in there, you know, not past, uh, I think, what, we're just, what was for the gyms, it was ten? Maybe we should, well, maybe we should include that, uh, some kind of time that we could agree on too for the, uh, for the wash, so that we can make sure that if, uh, the zone buds up against a residential, that we can make sure that those are, um, factors that are mitigated.
Hey, right now, on item, or number six, it says hours of operation, all automobile vehicle washing facilities are limited to seven A M. to ten P M., seven days a week. When adjacent to a residential district, the hours of operation shall be eight A M. to eight P M., seven days a week. So do we need to adjust it a little bit, or is that okay?
I'm okay with, I, I, that, that covers it, I just, I, I didn't, um.
Now, all the, all the only thing that changes is there is they worded in there, "all automobile vehicle washing."
Okay, all right, yeah, no, that's fine, I just wanna make sure that we have something in there so that we don't make a move, and then all of a sudden have a bunch of angry folk.
Yeah, that, 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 number six would cover that.
Because some of these, you know, things we wanna open up to be, have more freedom, also come with responsibility, and also come with the risk that the public that it surrounds could be unhappy, and so we just wanna make sure that we, uh, tighten it down, but still allow, you know, for that freedom to be able to do it.
Yeah, we could, we could definitely add some language if the council agrees to, you know, addressing, you know, no-washing, uh, vehicles in the public right-ofway, including alleyways, uh, as you mentioned. This would include staged vehicles, um, you know, waiting vehicle washing or pickup. Um, and then all vehicle washing shall remain on-site, um, and cannot take up any kind of required parking, so you don't have businesses using parking lots to, to wash cars as well. Um, and then as you mentioned about drainage and, and making sure it stays on-site, where we can make sure there's some type of requirement that, you know, the water that's being used is not going into the storm drains and making sure it's staying on-site in the existing sewer system. So we can, we can probably include that language. Um, and if the council agrees, we can make those changes, and then when we come back for the second reading, um, we wouldn't be able to make any changes at the second reading, but this, this is the time to make the change if the council, uh, desires.
And just to be clear, I don't want to cause a negative impact also on the, I, I know that sometimes we have some, um, you know, GoFundMe things go on where people are doing car washes for folks, I'm not trying to, you know, stop that, I know that some of the, uh, local stores, you know, allow those to happen, and that that's really important to the families, uh, that can't afford, um, or need help affording stuff, so I'm not trying to take that away, I just, you know, I.
And we have, sorry to interrupt, but we do have separate regulations under a temporary, uh, temporary use.
All right.
Where they're specific to fund car, uh, car fundraising, car washes. So we specifically addressed that, uh, quite a while ago, because we did have that, we did have that concern, so we do have regulations in place permitting those without a permit or anything like that.
Okay.
I think the only time that that one, that one changed a little bit was, uh, during the drought. We were, we were cutting most of that as much as possible because of the, just the excess wasted water. Okay, now, at this time, we'll go ahead and open.
I got a question, just, just to, just to get a clear, um, thing about this. So the operational hours would be for gyms and car washes from eight?
They have different, they have different times. Uh, the gyms would be, uh, basically between the hours, they can operate outside between the hours of six A M. and ten P M. If they're adjacent to residential.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have gyms in the residential?
Yeah, so, no, so if, because what this is doing is expanding it to our industrial zones, so if you think, so the areas along West Elm Avenue, there are some that are adjacent to residential, so like everything on the west side of Elm Avenue, pretty much from Faith Christian down to Lucille, are all, there's residential that's behind those alleys. So in that, in those situations, they'd be limited, uh, to certain hours of operation outdoors.
The other one over there off of Elm, and, uh.
Oh, the business, no, you're talking about the business line? So that would be cut down from, that'd be cut down from, what's their hours right now?
It, they don't really have limitations on hours right now, um, but it would just be six A, it'd be six A M. to six P M., they'd be able to operate outside.
Can it, well, why, why is this, um, why couldn't it be from five A M.? Because I know some of the correction officers, they go in there to get their workout.
Just outdoors, just outside, so.
Indoor is okay at any time, because those, that, that place will actually open up at, I think, four-thirty in the morning. So, yeah, it's only for the outside activity.
Just to limit noise to adjacent residences in the, in the early mornings and late evenings.
Okay, because I know there's some gyms that are.
Inside's not a problem, typically, they, you know, it's not a noise issue inside, it's the, it's just outdoor activity.
The outdoor, um, because, uh, okay, um, because I know there's, there's a gym that has outdoor, mostly their outdoor, um, equipment out there, and that would just eliminate the hours, right?
It would just restrict it between six A M. and ten, ten P M. Only if it's adjacent to residential, so if it's in a commercial area where there's surrounded by commercial property and, and operations, then there's no restriction, there wouldn't be a restriction.
All right, now, I just wanted to be clear, make sure that it doesn't interfere with their hours, because I know there's people that work at the prison coming late there and stuff like that, and I don't wanna disrupt their schedule, so, okay.
Any more, any more questions, council? Okay, now, at this time, we'll open it up to the public, if the public has any questions. Questions or comment, on it.
Hello, council, um, my name's Robert Howard, and I'm going to be hoping to open up a gym at the end of West Elm. And I just wanted to tell you guys our plans as far as we are a gym that is twenty-four hours, like Jose was talking about, most of our stuff is outside, but, um, being that we're gonna be moving potentially to this new, uh, location at the end of Elm, uh, we will definitely be adhering to all the, all the, um, regulations as far as, uh, being indoors by ten P M. Uh, and, and the music being down until about six A M. We are gonna be the only gym in town that is twenty-four hour operations. Um, but as the owner and operator of that place, my wife and I, uh, we're, we're, we're opening this place to, to better the community. We have a lot of plans that are gonna, uh, benefit the youth, uh, as well as the high school, uh, uh, sports teams as well. So I just wanna say thank you guys for putting this on the agenda and talking about this, and, and allowing, uh, small businesses to grow in this community that really, it really is, we're, we're looking to pour back into Kalinka, so I just wanna say appreciate that from you guys, you know? Thanks a lot. Do you guys have any questions for me as far as what we're gonna be doing out there, or? No?
I've already seen you guys starting to move some equipment.
Yeah.
What's the name of the business?
Strength Valley.
Strength Valley, okay, perfect.
I have, I have one more question, actually. What, if this does go into effect, when am I allowed to open up for business?
The, the second reading will be on the nineteenth, I think that's the next meeting. Um, and I think you'd be, as soon as that gets approved, you'd be able to start moving forward.
Like the twentieth?
Yeah.
So, so once you guys, once it's approved, i- is it a question of if, or is it a question of when?
That's a question for them.
Okay.
Well, I think as is written already, uh, you're able to operate now, it's just adjusting it to make sure that it's not outside during the night to, from, from certain time to certain time.
One of the major changes to this is actually allowing gyms within that zone. So you can see in the red, it says yes along that red in the C G, and then also it has the, if you scroll a little bit further down, it, it shows the, but it shows the, um, M B L zones. Currently, there, those are no in these areas, we're changing those, those will be changed to yeses.
Yeses, oh, okay, all right. So you'll be good even though by tonight?
Yeah, in two weeks.
In two weeks, okay.
Yeah, so I would say you could come in on Monday and start processing your business license paperwork to move over.
Uh, this Monday or, or the twentieth?
The twentieth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Or you can get your paperwork in now.
Yeah.
And then, because you'll need a fire inspection
Uh-huh.
from the fire department as well, so we can start working through those for you.
Right.
And then, so when everything's in formal effect, we can, you can start.
Okay, I can schedule that with you, some, at the station, great, okay, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Anyone else have any questions or, or concerns? Saying no, and we'll go ahead and close this part of the public hearing. What would council like to do?
Does this require a vote to move forward? So I would like to make, um, a motion that, uh, we approve this with, uh, the suggested changes to be brought back.
And I'll second. Okay, we get a roll call, please.
I missed two seconded, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilman Vosberg?
Wait, hold, hold on a sec. Councilman Hedgecock, do you have any questions or concerns?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
Sounds, sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
I vote aye. Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Adopt Resolution Number four-two-three-four, vacating a two-foot public street easement property located at seven-three-three Riesling Lane Public Street right-ofway. Sean?
Thank you. Uh, mayor and council, this is, uh, the public hearing that was noticed and scheduled from the previous meeting, uh, when the council passed the notice of intent resolution. And so this is the vacation of a, basically, two-foot unimproved dirt area between the original wood fence and the sidewalk along the property at, uh, seven-thirty-three Riesling Way. We did this in, on Chianti Circle a few years back. Um, these are areas where the right-ofway extends beyond just the back of the sidewalk, but then we have this kind of no-man's-land area between the, the fence line and the back of sidewalk that's not typically maintained. And so a lot of, we've had some residents request, if they could move their fence, it basically enlarges their backyard a little bit, um, by the city vacating the additional, uh, two-foot of right-ofway, so they can build that fence out to the back of the, uh, sidewalk. It's about a hundred-and-eighty-five square feet, and we would just be vacating the right-ofway, and then that would essentially just get reverted back to the property owner. Um, and so with that, uh, this is, this is a public hearing, it's required, um, to have that, have the public, host the public hearing for these types of right-ofway vacations. So if you have any questions, I may already happen to answer them, but, uh, I'll leave it up to you guys.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up to the public, if the public has any questions or concerns.
Hello, my name is Maria, I am the owner of, uh, the property, um, seven-thirty-three Riesling Lane. I just wanna scoot my fence. Um, the new builds are really small, the backyards, and I don't, I'm trying to make every inch, um, count. So the, the yards are really small, and that's all I wanna do, I just wanna scoot it, I thought it was six feet, but, uh, the city put a letter on my fence, and I believe now it's two feet. And that's, that's all I wanna do. Um, and my question is, um, if it does get approved, when will I get the okay to do this?
Once approved tonight, you'll be good to move forward.
Okay, uh, will I be?
The, the documents have to be recorded, but you can start moving forward with that, with that process.
Okay, uh, will I get any, um, documentation as far as like being the owner that, that belongs to me?
Yep, yeah, we'll be record, they'll be recording documents, that's part of like the cost, the cost associated with processing it, not just having to go through the hearing process, but also the recording, uh, process for our city engineer to record those documents, so it'll be part of the deed. Um, but yeah, well, as soon as, uh, this meeting concludes next week, we'll be back in touch with you to get those documents taken care of and signed.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this part of the public hearing, council. Have any questions or concerns?
Just a real quick one, um, I'm looking at the map here, this property's on the corner, correct?
Yeah.
And so there's no visual block here, is there a stop sign there?
No, not, not, not at these areas, no.
Okay, I, I know we've been down this road before with all the corner stuff.
No, there's, there's corner cutoffs currently in those areas, so you have some corner cutoff for visibility, the houses are set back far enough where you've got that visibility.
See down the street.
Yeah.
There's no, uh, um, cable stub, you know, those little green?
No, these are not, they're not public utility easements, so these are actually just, um, yeah, these are tip, these are typically just, uh, right-ofway. It's not actually easements that are being granted, it's actually right-ofway. We have standard, standard-sized road widths in our, in our construction standards, so when we build them, they put in the, they put in the roadways, but then when they build the actual road, it's different. So we're actually in the process of changing that too, to make sure it's consistent, um, with the actual, uh, with the standards that we put in place for the subdivisions in relation to our standards.
So I have a question. So on the map, which one is it?
On Exhibit B?
Yes.
It's the lot one-oh-nine, so you can see the little hashed area, so they're adding an extra two feet.
Okay.
It's just basically bringing the property to the back of the sidewalk, essentially.
All right.
Any other questions, council? Saying no, okay. Um, I'll make a motion to approve this with the changes.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mayor Horn?
Yes, aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Okay, next, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our consent calendar, we have eleven items tonight. Is there anything that council would like to pull and talk about or table?
Yeah, I'd like to pull, um, eight, nine, and ten.
Any other items, council? Okay, move on to the first one, uh, item number five-point-eight, Councilman Vosberg.
All right, so my question on this is, it says, uh, execute an amended engineering work order with the city for design engineering services for the C Mac Trails Project Segments one, two, thirteen, and fourteen.
Yes.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, and I, I click on the little map here, and I can see usually I can see like a, a list of, uh, you know, look to where those are, but on this one, I don't really see it. So I guess my question is, is that, do we have, did we completely, uh, kick out the idea of putting one, um, that goes to Sandalwood? Is that a different?
That's part of, that's part of the A T P five project.
Okay, it's part of the A T P five, so it's never gonna, so it's not gonna be included into the, into this, into this?
No, this is an on, this is an ongoing project, this is a project that's already through the environmental phase. Um, section one, two, thirteen, and fourteen are the segments that are, um, basically behind the sports complex along that, kind of the Cambridge alignment, all the way back to the, connecting to the Monterey side.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna cross the bridge south of, um, of the, uh, Wurthen, not Wurthen, Los Gatos, uh, Creek Bridge, cross there, and then go along the creek, and then basically bring out, go out, head out towards, uh, like Gregory, out towards that direction, towards the, where the walk, where the, um, the new bridge is gonna be, the pedestrian bridge that's gonna be built.
Okay.
So this is a project that's ongoing. What happened in this specific situation was when we had the heavy water, uh, heavy flooding, I guess we wouldn't call it flooding, but we had the heavy rainfall in twenty, when did we have the rescue, chief? Twenty-twenty-two? Um, it scoured out where we were originally gonna put the trail. And so the, and, and if it's right around where Folsom Street is, it really narrowed that area in terms of where the trail was gonna go, so we had to, one, amend how the environmental was gonna look, we're also having to add some additional support and riprap along that portion of the truck. We're also having to add some additional support and riprap along that portion of the truck, the, uh, the creek. And then we're bringing that trail a little bit closer to those, that's that area. So we had to kind of realign it, and it required a little bit more design work, because the engineers had continually been designing the project, and then we had those, uh, those impacts. So we're kind of working through that, but that's the, basically the change on this. But no, there's other projects that are in the works. This is just one of many other grant-funded projects that we have that are related to the trail system.
And which ATP fund is this one?
This is not, this is C-MAC, so this is congestion mitigation air quality grant. Two different grant programs, yeah.
Okay, alright, perfect.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to five point nine, uh, Councilman Vosberg.
Alright, so I pulled five point nine and five point ten, uh, because sometimes the folks that are, that the, the claims for, uh, come, and I always want to give them a chance to, to talk, or for us to understand what the, what's going on with them. That way we can always just have that. So I guess we'll do number nine first, and, and.
I'll have Mercedes can report on those.
So this was a claim for damages received from Noel Diaz, No Diaz, in regards to windshield that he stated that due to the street sweeper passing by on his street, cracked his windshield. This was sent over to George Hill's Company, our third-party administrator. We get the claims in, we send them to our third-party administrator. They ask for additional information, they will contact the claimant, and based on that information, they make a recommendation, and they made the recommendation to reject this claim due to the fact the way the street sweeper operates, they pull items in, they don't push it out when the street sweeper operates, and based on that, and the gentleman was not present at the time when the windshield was cracked. He's, um, so they moved forward with suggesting rejection of the claim.
Alright, thank you.
And same for item number ten as well, correct?
Number ten, we received a claim for damages presented by Danielle, Daniel Solario in regards to a cracked cellphone screen. The claim was sent to George Hill's Company. That was reviewed by them. We also, based on the information received from city staff to George Hill's Company and from Mr. Solario, George Hill's Company recommended rejecting this claim due to the cellphone already being cracked when he had interaction with the police department.
Thank you.
Any more questions to those three? Okay, what would counsel like to do?
I move to approve the consent calendar as it is.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item, ordinance, presentations, discussion, potential action items. We have five items tonight. The first one is introduce and waive first reading of ordinance number eight seventy related to unsafe camping and public hazards in the city. Sean.
Thank you. This is a continuation item from the previous meeting related to adopting ordinance eight seventy related to unsafe camping and public hazards in the city. The US Supreme Court recently granted cities more power to arrest, cite, and find people who sleep outside in public places, overturning six years of legal protections for homeless residents in California and other western states. City council at the last meeting directed staff to be, um, bring back an ordinance addressing unsafe camping and public hazards that included, and that, and we've included in the ordinance, updated language related to defining abandoned and unattended properties. So we gave, we had the city attorney go through the ordinance based on the comments and suggestions from the council at the last meeting, and we have brought forward an updated ordinance that addresses defining what abandoned and unattended property is in order to allow law enforcement and any other, whether it be code enforcement, the ability to address these issues about property that's left. I know that Councilman Hedgecock could ask some questions about what we do with that property, we're gonna have to appound the property. So this gives us a little bit more flexibility based on amending those definitions. So with that, I'm not gonna go into too much detail on the, on the ordinance, because I know we discussed that in length at the last meeting, but those changes have been made. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, but if not, we'll just need a vote to approve and introduce and waive the first reading.
Councilman Hedgecock, you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't.
Looks good.
Okay, what would counsel like to do? With this item?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance eight seventy.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye, vote aye. Okay, move on to item number two, discussion and direction relating, oh, related to regulating unhoused individuals living in vehicles on the city streets.
Thank you. So this was a future agenda item requested by Councilman Vosberg. Councilman Vosberg had expressed receiving complaints from residents concerning the increased unhoused individuals living in RVs on public streets and the potential safety issues related to the activity. So I provide a little bit of background in the discussion section about code sections that apply related to the vehicle code section, as well as the municipal code sections that currently apply to, um, not necessarily unhoused individuals, but people that are potentially temporarily living in RVs. I know we've had some discussions in the past based on the current regulations that are in place since two thousand nineteen related to, uh, non-paying guests of folks, maybe if relatives are visiting, or someone else is visiting, adjacent to the property on the street for a limited period of time. However, we'll, staff's basically looking for direction from the council as to how you'd like to address the concerns, as well as possible amendments to the code to provide the tools for not only the police department, but code enforcement to enforce some of these concerns. I've even provided some, uh, even some considerations of some changes to the code that might work, uh, that may work in terms of being able to address this and providing even more discretion to code enforcement and the police department to enforce these types of issues. So with that, uh, Mr., uh, Councilman Vosberg, I'll, hey, if you have any questions, or if anybody else from the council?
Go ahead.
Alright, so this has come about recently. I've received a lot of complaints about a couple different RVs of people that are coming through town, and they've decided that they're going to camp on the streets. And one time I got five complaints, like in one day, from one person, because that person was parked next to an area where people congregate, and they were worried that kids walking by the area, that there could be something going on with that. And, uh, they don't know who's in the RV, they don't know, like, um, you don't have any information on them. In this specific instance, the RV didn't have plates. So, um, you know, I did make a, a call in, and the police said, you know, they're passing through, and, you know, they don't, they don't have the plates on, but they do have permission from the DMV to move, you know, their vehicle around. And so I just wanted to, you know, I guess, when the, when the public doesn't know what's going on, their, their gut default is to make sure that the, everyone around is protected. And when you have vehicles that people are living in, where, you know, it's apparent that they're, they're living there and that they're not from the area, then it makes people feel nervous, and, um, you know, it actually could, you, you don't know what, you know, what could happen either from the people that are, that are homeless in the RV, or whether or not the public could think something was going on that's not. And so I just want to address that issue somehow, because I don't want someone to think, you know, the people, the, I ended up meeting the people, the people seemed to be very nice, they only stayed a couple days, they were down on their luck, they ended up going somewhere else. But that didn't stop the residents from coming and saying, hey, you know, we're gonna watch and make sure they don't, you know, pick up any kids, or, you know, it's just the idea of not knowing what's going on that I think, um, and so I just wanted to kind of further define the regulations. And like, you know, the, the regulations as they see, as they sit, I thought, were good, but then, w- once digging down into it, it looked like that there was room to make further changes.
I got, I got a question.
How do we make it to where, if it is a guest of, a resident staying in their trailer on the street, compared to somebody driving through town and loitering on our streets? I think that's what we need to clarify the definition for this. Because we don't want to stop residents from letting their family, if they're coming for a weekend or whatever, parking next to their house. But we don't want people driving through town. And I know it sounds bad, but when you don't know somebody, and they're driving through town and decide to take a residence on the street, like Nathan said, you don't know them, and, and nobody does. Whether they're good people or not, you know, we need to have a way to police that.
Yeah, I think Councilman Hedgecock hit the nail on the head. Um, that's exactly what, and I, I'm not, the, my goal is definitely not to stop people from, hey, you're gonna have some friends and family over for a weekend, and they want to be able to, you know, RV in front of their houses. It's not that, it's the unknowns. So yeah, perfect, exactly what, uh, Councilman Hedgecock said.
Go ahead, Roger. You got questions?
I, I'm just, I'm a little curious on how you would enforce that goal about enforcing something like that. I mean, how would you approach and decide if somebody's there illegally, unless you're gonna just rely on complaints?
I think that's the challenge. Um, I provided a few bullet points that we might be able to consider, and I can work with the city attorney on trying to develop some language that will give us some more teeth. One is probably defining what a non-paying guest is. Um, if they're parked across, I mean, adjacent to a vacant lot, they're probably not a non-paying guest of that lot, or, you know, at least define it, um, as what a non-paying guest is. Establish language related to determining zoning district that it applies to. You know, if it's down in the commercial district, it's probably not an appropriate location for people to be. Um, and then also clean up languages relates to what evidence is needed to establish what human habitation is of that, um, that RV. So we can look at that, because there's a couple sections in the code that really address it, and it's the four dash four seven two two dash one, but I don't know if I included four dash four seven two two dash two. That's the kind of, what I would almost consider, and Sean may agree, is kind of the cat and mouse game we play, where someone's parked there for no more than seventy-two hours, and then they're told to leave. They only have to leave a quarter, move a quarter mile, and then they can't come back for forty-eight. So, but if they're just here in town, they don't necessarily pick one location, because that's where they want to be. They pick a location, that's where they just happen to locate. So making them move a quarter of a mile, or a half mile, so it's actually a half mile, not gonna make a difference for them. And I know that code enforcement's had issues with that as well in some other instances, so. And the vehicle code really doesn't have a whole lot for the police department in terms of other than seventy-two hours on the street, right? So I think we can probably look at this code section, if it's a consensus of the council to try to address this, I think we can probably find some language that can help give more tools to the police department, as well as code enforcement to address these issues.
Yeah, there's a, I, I know there's been a gray van that's been doing that same thing for the last three and a half years. Is there anything that we can do to kind of stop that?
Well, I think this is what, what the, what the changes would address, because these are the exact issues we're having. Because the code has somewhat, it's got teeth, but not enough to address some of these issues where, you know, if a, if a non-paying guest, legitimate person's there for like a week, we may go to them and say, hey, you've been here too long, you need to leave. They're gonna leave. But ones that, if this is the primary potential home for them, and it's the desire of the council to restrict that in town due to safety concerns and other issues, then we need to make sure we have a little bit more teeth in the ordinance to address those types of situations.
No, I agree. I just was concerned that we would be maybe targeting people that are legitimate, you know, rather, and, and how that, I was just curious how that interaction would happen.
Yeah, I think we can, we can be cognizant of that, because I, I remember going through the discussions about the non-paying guests, the fourteen days, um, you know, and, I mean, no more than a total of fourteen days, and allowing people up to forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours, I think, on the street if they're a non-paying guest of a resident. Um, so we can address some of these things to make sure we protect what's currently in place, but also address the, the concerns of, uh, Councilman Vosberg, as well as the rest of the council, it sounds like.
Is there a way, like, we can make, we can make, I'm sorry, um, we can make a tag where it belongs to that residence? Or, you know, something like a sticker, a tag where, you know, we know that it belongs to, or they can prove it belongs to, instead of somebody just passing by parking at their house or something?
I've thought about that. But I don't know how like ironclad that would be. Because then you're having to verify with the homeowner, if you have an issue and the homeowner's not home, how do you verify whatever that person's in possession of is actually given by that property owner? So it might be challenging in the, in a sense.
I thought, I, I thought I seen it in, in a town or something, or must have been the news, they're starting to kick out RVs that were in parks, or they were next to, um, um, trailer park parks. There were, had it's like a, like a RQ code, and they will, oh, this one belongs to this residence, oh, this one belongs to this residence. I don't know what town it was, but something like, maybe come up something like that.
Uh,
Maybe, I don't know.
It's a possibility.
I don't think we should be, I don't think we should be QR coding our, our citizens' vehicles to keep track of them. They have a license plate. But the community does have to get involved when they see a sketchy vehicle parked, and then a week later, that sketchy vehicle's parked in another part of town. I mean, we have to get our community involved, and our officers have to check on that stuff. And, you know, that's, the way I'm taking this is, we have to come up with an ordinance to where that can't happen. Just because of the state of the world, and we don't want that kind of stuff going on in town, where you might possibly have some bad actor, bad element rolling through your community that decides to take our residents, because we're a nice community. And, you know, it's fine for somebody who's wanting to come here, work, live, and all that stuff, but not somebody who's wanting to come through town in a nefarious way. We, and we have to get people involved in, in policing that, not just the police.
I, I agree with that completely. I was just concerned with the people who are legitimately parked.
We can, we can protect that.
Any other questions to it? Okay, what would counsel like to do then?
I'd like to send, uh, staff, uh, to make some different recommendations to the code, and then bring it back for approval. In fact, I make a motion, uh, to, to have staff, um, make some suggestions to the code, and then bring it back for approval.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye, vote aye. Okay, we'll move on to item number three, discussion, direction, and potential action related to Kalinga Electronic Sign Relocation Budget and Plan. Sean.
Thank you. Mayor, council, uh, tonight staff is, uh, recommending, uh, taking action to proceed with the relocation of the Community Pride Sign, currently located at the corner of Elm Avenue and Cherry Lane to its recommended location. Um, back in July, the council directed staff to look at alternative locations for the relocation of the electronic sign. Um, staff has included the original location, and then in addition, one additional site for council's consideration, um, in the report, which is the location at Phelps and Elm. Uh, it did pose some, some issues, uh, in terms of the alternative, um, location. We could consider as another location, uh, if, if there, what was I looking at here? Let's see, wait. The walking beam, that's what it was, okay. Which is the southwest corner. Which is at the southwest corner of Phelps and Elm. There is good visibility and it's near a signal as mentioned by the council at the, at the last meeting when this item was discussed and I provided a copy of the layout and superimposed the image of the sign. And it's been attached for you guys to consider as well if this is the location. There's a little bit more logistical issues in terms of power at this location. And there is some grade differences there which might make it a little bit more challenging there. It'd have to be a little bit further down the, the, the grade from where the sidewalk is on Elm. However, after considering that and looking at the original location, I guess I'm gonna have to stay hard, hard strong on the Grant Street location on the triangle would be my recommendation that we proceed forward. And based on prior discussions is to proceed forward with the, the relocation of the sign as well as updating those electronic message boards. To proceed with those newer message boards to really try to enhance the ability to get different messaging out as well as really enhance our ability to advertise businesses as well at, on that sign. Because right now, I, it's like using a light bright, I think, with that sign right now when it comes to the, the actual resolution. So I think it's definitely, it's, that sign's been there for quite some time since about two thousand nine. So it has been quite a few years and it has lasted quite a while surprisingly, but now we're starting to see a lot of failure in the sign. And as everyone knows, it hasn't been operational for quite some time. Trying to get it repaired, which is gonna be relatively costly. So with that, I'll allow the council to kind of discuss what you guys would like to do and we'll do what you guys would like.
Any questions right now or concerns?
I mean, I like it being on where you have a stop sign and where people are gonna stop and then they're gonna read it. I, I think that's hugely beneficial. I understand staff's concerns with that. My thought is that if we have it, I mean, on the street on Grant, how it sits, there is a stop sign, but that stop sign's only gonna barely be used and most people that are gonna come by it are just gonna either A zoom by or B they're gonna be distracted by looking at the sign and it could cause an accident. That, that intersection there has an ability for people to stop where they're going to turn into the. Yeah, and so I just, I think that that's, I mean, I'm gonna go with whatever the, the rest of the council wants on this, but I would prefer this, the, the stop sign because I just think it's a better visibility. It may not look so visible there, but if we could figure out how to put it into there. But like I said, I'm gonna go with what the rest of the council wants.
Same here. I, I think that, I'm looking at a picture here of the sign and it's got like five lines of text on it. There's almost no way you could drive by and, and glean any information from that on the way by. You almost need to be stopped. So I'm, I'm with Bosberg, Mr. Bosberg, that we should really consider a, a position where people are stopped for some amount of time somehow, if possible.
So what would the cost difference be if you were to put it at Phelps and Elm?
It's probably gonna run about the same, might be a little bit more because the estimate we got from the sign company to move the sign was based on the distance. They were very specific about how far are we moving the sign. So it may bring up just the removal and installation cost, maybe more. Power may be a little bit more of an issue, but we'd have to verify where we can pull, where we'd be able to pull power. But it's gonna be relatively pretty close in, in price.
I'm not saying I like the Phelps. I, I'm saying that it, I, I think it'd be more appropriate if people were stopped in order to read it.
I completely agree.
What was that, council?
He agreed.
I said I agree.
Okay.
It needs to be somewhere where people are stopped.
We can't put it on the, we don't, you know where that little shopping mall thing where in the future is gonna go? Right there on San, just across the street from Phelps.
Across from Phelps?
Yeah, just right across, right across.
Well, we've, we basically looked at property that we own and so we're, we're looking at the most cost-effective way to, to move the sign and relocate it. We have to start looking at acquiring property. A lot of those properties have absolutely no power nearby. So that's gonna, and it's new raw land where we're trying to use existing property to try and limit the costs related to power because the, the further the power pole, the, the longer, the more, the more costly it's gonna get. Electric, the electric is, electrical is the, is the most expensive component of the relocation of the sign. On any location, getting new service panels, getting new service drop for the potential panel. The, the location that's being recommended, it has one very close nearby. It's a very short distance to provide power there. We already have water there for irrigation. And so those are factors that we took into effect as well as we have broadband access there as well with the new recent install of unwired. We have access so we can make sure we have communication from City Hall to the location. Because we have, that's, we have like basically a point-to-point network from the top of City Hall to that sign location. Hence the big pole that's over there currently at the location it's at now. We, and we did try to look at locations where there are, you know, stop signs or, or signals and there's not really another, there wasn't a lot of other options along any like major thoroughfare. There are gonna be as part of the Highway thirty-three improvement project, there's gonna be an, an additional crosswalk added just south of this location on Grant, a cross between Tropicana and Dollar General. And then they'll all, and that'll be a lit crosswalk as well as the crosswalk that's existing on Baker Street as well, right by the gym, crossing over to the gas station.
So what's the timeline on when this has to be removed?
The plans, building plans are in for Starbucks and so are the engineering plans. So probably within the next few months.
I wonder if there's an option to maybe reach out to the college and see if they wouldn't let us put it on their property right across the, right where.
By Cambridge.
Yeah, by Cambridge.
Okay, so probably, wait, on Cambr, oh, Cambridge and, at Cambridge and Elm?
Put it above there because they have their marquee already, put ours above theirs or right behind it.
I, I, I did consider that site, but I'm not gonna be the one to encourage the removal of those cork oaks that were accidentally removed years and years ago. I, I was here, I was here when those accidentally got removed when that sign was being put in. I don't know if there's room over there based on the improvements to be actually have visibility from the intersection. Because I know if you want to be able to see it, it might be a little challenging to be able to see it with the streets, with the street trees that are there as well as those cork oaks that are right there as well.
So do we have, like, how much time though do you think we have literally?
Few months.
So could we go back one more time and try and see and maybe I can help reach out if, and some of the council can help reach out too, to some of the people around and see if we couldn't get a right of way to put that sign in a different spot? Because like, like they were saying, I mean, I'm not a super fan of the Phelps thing either. I just want people to be able to be stopped because if we're gonna spend, you know, a hundred grand on moving it and making sure it's good, I want to make it, you know, presentable. I like the idea of it when you come right into town, you have a sign. That's pretty cool. You know, that's like, hey, this is town. I don't know, I just think.
I mean, there, so that's, that's the thing is so if we, if, if the council wants to see it a little bit further out of town, we can, we can potentially do it along, you know, but you got higher speeds, there's nobody stopped there. But on like Jane Avenue as you're coming into town, we own all that right of way along that grass area. But as you come into town, you got so many smaller parcels, you got limited space. And in reality, the sign's pretty big. It seems like it could fit. I think sometimes looking at this, it makes it look a little smaller, but when you stand under that thing, it's pretty big. So it takes up a little more space than it does when you see it on an exhibit like that.
Unless there was a roundabout right there, right?
Yeah, and it's a two-sided sign, so you want to make sure you have access to see it going both ways.
What about the GPS property that's right there, on the other side of the stop sign? I mean, on the, on the other side of this, yeah, right by the creek, about that area.
At the, Phelps?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can look and see if there's something there, if there's an option there.
I mean, I'm just saying, you know, we got, go ahead, sorry.
I, I, in my opinion, we have to look at somewhere where you're, when you're drawing somebody's attention to the Klinga sign. And it, it's supposed to look nice, we don't want to put it on a piece of property that doesn't. You gotta look at that too. It's advertisement for the city and if we put it somewhere that doesn't look good, that doesn't look good for us. So, you know, we gotta consider that as well.
And, and, and to that point, it might actually, that may be a little more difficult even at the Phelps site, right? Because you're gonna be basically putting it in that gravel area or on the other side of the road. On the west side of Elm, you're gonna be having that similar situation there where it's not really, you know, there's not a whole lot there. We got a billboard that sits right there as well.
Well, can we look just a little bit deeper to see if there's anything else we can do before we make a decision?
I can dig a little deeper. I can look at private property, see if there's other options and then kind of give the ideas of what, what potential other factors would be included beyond just trying to look at property that we have control over. If that's what the council would like.
Yep, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on.
We'll go ahead and move on to the next item. Number four, consideration and approval of resolution number four, two, three, two. Taking notice that the animal shelter project can be more economically performed through the use of the open market. Sean.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My computer just turned off for a minute. Here we go. So this item is in response to a previous request from the council. As we rejected all bids for the animal shelter project originally, the project came in well above engineer's estimate for this project. Engineer's estimate with the revised scope was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. HBC Enterprises was the lowest bidder with a total bid proposal of seven hundred and forty-four thousand to rehab that particular location, that, the, the animal shelter location on Polk Street. So with this action, the council would consider approval of resolution four, three, four, two, three, two. Taking notice that the animal shelter project can be more economically performed through the use of the open market. This is done, the lowest bid was almost three times higher than the engineer's estimate as we talked about. Public contracts code allows the city council to pass a resolution by four fifths vote declaring that the project can be performed more economically in the open market. With the passage of the resolution, the city can begin the rehabilitation of the animal shelter in a cost-effective manner. So if approved tonight, I would be working with our building, our building inspector to coordinate with local contractors of different trades or one trade to be able to start and build a full project to complete this animal shelter project. So if the council chooses to use the HBC Enterprises, then the effective fiscal impact would be the seven eighty-one, six, twenty. If the council resubmits the project for another round of public bid or pass the resolution suggested, it's unknown what the overall fiscal impact will be at this point in time because we don't know exactly what it will cost. We're just anticipating it being less. So one of the questions we're gonna have for the council is whether or not we proceed, provide, get some costs back from some contractor, local contractors and different trades to kind of get a cumulative cost of what this project is going to cost. Or whether we're like, or whether the council would like to proceed saying, hey, we're, we're pretty confident the project's gonna be less than the seven eighty-one. If we can just proceed with the project, assuming it's gonna be less than that amount. So it's kind of one of those things where do you want to wait and wait? We can probably, I think we can probably get costs back in the next meeting or two. We do have an extension for the kennels with UC Davis until the end of the year. The biggest thing is they're gonna want to know we're proceeding forward. So it's not that the project has to be completed by then, but I know we're anxious to get this project moving forward. That as long as we're saying, hey, we're moving, we're, we're starting to renovate, that's gonna satisfy our grant with UC Davis for the kennels.
I have one question. Are we gonna be able to utilize our in-house staff?
Yeah, Eric's probably gonna yell at me, but yeah, we'll, we'll use as much as our, our maintenance worker staff as we can to try to do like a lot of the cleaning and grubbing. You know, there's some, I think there's some shelving that needs to remove. There's some, you know, probably some dirt movement that we can do. So there's some items that we can take care of in-house, but then we'll ultimately have to have, you know, specialized trades come in and do some of the plumbing work, electrical, carpentry work, that kind of stuff that'll be, still be required.
Can we give some of that work to our locals?
Yeah, the goal is, is reach out to local contractors and.
I'm totally in for that.
Yes, and that's really what the, what the benefit to this is, is that. Yeah.
All right, then with, with that being said, I don't, I don't, you have any questions, Councilman Hedgecock?
No, I've talked to Sean before. I think that's the way to go. In order to get this done, there's, just bidding it out isn't gonna work. It keeps going up every time, every time it gets touched, so. Getting local guys to do some of the work and having the city folks do some of the work, I think is gonna be the best route to go in my opinion.
All right, thank you. With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve this. Are we going to be getting numbers first?
That was, that was the question I was gonna ask. So if you guys would like to proceed, we can start moving forward and we can provide updates at meetings and kind of like where we're at. Or we can try and get everything together and kind of get an idea of what that cost is gonna be for the council.
Yeah, it, that, okay, so, yeah, go ahead and move forward with it then and get us the numbers so we kind of have a better guesstimate of where, how close we're gonna be to our original number.
Prior to moving, prior to starting construction?
Yeah, then bring it back to us to finalize. Sound good?
Okay.
And this will require approval of the resolution and requires four fifths approval of the resolution.
You made a motion, right, Roger?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Bosberg?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five, airport days, planning and budget update.
Just one second.
There's, there's two sheets up there. There's one that's individual here.
All right. So staff's recommendation for this item is just for the council to receive an update from staff and then consider discussing and direct staff to proceed with any, you know, updates or changes in regards to the airport days, Wings and Wheels event. So staff's been working with the chamber on the airport days, Wings and Wheels event scheduled for Sunday, September twenty-ninth. The event will take place at the city's airport off of Phelps Avenue. The event will have planes and cars on display, local vendors, food trucks, and several kids activities including paper plane making, crafting, and a screening of the movies Planes and Cars in one of the hangars at the airport. Staff's been working with the chamber to develop a plan that is more kid-centric and something free to the public as a way to increase awareness of the airport and for aviation in general. This will also serve as an economic development tool to encourage future development of the airport. With that, there are costs associated with putting on an event like this as it has evolved over the course of the past month. Some of the costs associated with the event include, you know, procurement of tables and chairs, canopies, fencing, porta-potties, water sinks, fuel for the pilots as a way to encourage participation in the event. In addition, there has been an offer from Paso Air Museum to provide a Douglas C forty-seven Skytrain and a TC thirty-four Mentor Warbird where folks can actually explore the two planes. So those will actually be planes that kids can get into, take a look at. And in future years, maybe they'll fly them around, but this year, everything's gonna be static displays. So in terms of, and I, I did provide a, a, a copy of what those airplanes look like in the, in the package as well so you can kind of see. So in developing the plan for the event, staff wanted to provide the, I just wanted to provide the council with an estimated cost impact of putting on this type of event. So with the cost of the event, associated with the event is listed, the estimated cost to the event may reach twenty thousand. However, a significant cost relates to the fueling cost, which staff is anticipating recovering some of those costs from fuel as the fueling cost would remain at the airport for a month where the remaining unused fuel. as the fueling cost would remain at the airport for a month, where the remaining unused fuel could be sold to pilots. So essentially, we'd have the airport open for a month for folks to use the fuel. The city on average, in an average year, would sell approximately three-hundred to five-hundred gallons of fuel, so if the war was out, people would utilize that fuel. Now that is a worst-case scenario, because we are still talking to some other vendors regarding fuel opportunities. So if that works out, it could be significantly less. It's just that they were limited on a fixed amount of fuel that we have to purchase and have delivered, so there is costs associated with that. This would be a general fund expense, however, the fuel budget for the airport is thirty thousand for fiscal year twenty-five, so some of those costs could come and originate from that existing budget. But staff feels this is a reasonable expense to create an exposure to the airport and build a foundation for future expanded airshows and potential economic development opportunities at the airport. So with that, it's kind of an informational item, I mean, this, this event's kind of moving forward, but as I've kind of taken the helm, it's, we, you know, discussions have gotten more broad, and we've, the product, the event's expanded, but I think it's actually expanded into a really, which will be a really successful and big project, so, event. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Council have any questions? Councilman Hitchcock, you have any questions?
Nope, appreciate all the work going into this.
Okay, what would...
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I add one more thing, I need to add one more thing that we discussed. So there was some, there was some discussion about some of the concerns for informational vendors not being able to afford or obtain insurance for, for the event. And we have a lot of informational vendors coming out, we have food vendors, we have other types of vendors coming out, but for the, there was a request to see if the city could obtain an insurance, and whether we charge those vendors, or whether we just encumber those costs for additional insurance for informational booths, like we do at National Night Out, where for like an informational exhibitor, it'd be forty-six dollars cost to the city for those vendors to be able to be covered under a, and that's based on the National Night Out costs, it may fluctuate a little bit, but we anticipated it being around, around that price. So I just want to make sure if we have concurrence from the, from the council that we could waive that fee, or the insurance requirement, and cover that for like informational booths. Folks that aren't really selling anything are expecting to generate revenue, okay. Did I get everything cleared, did I need to clarify anything, Mercedes?
Um, one other aspect of the vendor portion is when it's a small vendor that doesn't have like a brick and mortar or ongoing, uh, business, to, um, somebody contacted me today that they went through their homeowner's insurance, where they have their car insurance, and they were not wanting to pick them up with that type of coverage because of the changes of insurance in California. They did suggest that they reach out to AAA, so they were gonna do that, but I did give them the cost of perhaps eighty-four dollars for being a vendor that we could provide through special event insurance. She said that, you know, seems like a reasonable cost, but not all small vendors would be able to cover that. And there was a question if there was a possibility for a workaround. So I don't know if that's something that the council is willing to consider of some type of workaround, if it was eighty-four dollars. If we're covering the cost for informational vendors, would we also do that for other vendors? But then, other vendors are going to be, um, gonna be making sales, so, but that's a discussion for the council.
So what about a fifty-fifty split, if, if, if it starts to get a little too expensive? Maybe help out with half of it to equal out to the informational, us covering the informational at least.
I would like to encourage the small vendors to come and participate, I think it would be good for them, so if we could make it easier, it would be nice, yeah.
So maybe split the cost with them?
I'm sure anything would happen.
I know, I know it's gonna change in, in, in the next few years as things start to progress, but just to kind of help them get here and get everybody to have something they can enjoy for a while.
I mean, I think that it, growing the event is like the most important thing, and bringing attention to the airport, and bringing attention to the fact that this is the first, hopefully, of many of these type of things, and I think the more people that we can get to attend, that the more vendors that we have, it's gonna increase attendance just by vendors itself, and that will also encourage others. So I'm, I'm in for whatever, you know, you guys want to do to make it easier for vendors to come, I think that'd be a great idea.
Scott, do you know how many non-food sales vendors we have, that'll be selling something that's non-food related? So twenty-four, okay. Okay. Yeah, and we're, and we're already working with, yeah, they're, they're, they're gonna be already insured, as Scott mentioned, so we won't have to worry about them, so it'd really be the non-food vendors, so, you know, it really depends. Could be a couple thousand dollars in waivers if we didn't charge insurance for the informational and non-food sales.
I think that's a minimal cost compared to like, like, we really should be promoting this event, I mean, as hard as we can and try and get as many people to come, I think it's, you know, it should just be looked at as a cost of doing business to try and get people out there for the airport. I mean, I think we should, I think we should cover it.
That, would that still keep us within that twenty?
Well, I was just gonna say, like, for our downtown events, the chamber has a five million insurance policy, so are little vendors like that required to have that insurance, because they're covered in the yard?
So when, we're all sure this is gonna be a good event, but they're, it's unproven to them. If I told them at Kalinga Fest, hey, you're gonna have to pay forty dollars for insurance, they would probably do it, because they know it gets packed. It's always good weather, this and that, out there, they don't know where people are gonna travel. So I mean, if you're selling, you know, three-dollar bracelets to kids, little airplanes on it, are you gonna pay eighty dollars for insurance? And then, am I even gonna get that back? I mean, my hope is to get them out there this year, do well, get a good crowd, then next year, yeah, let them know upfront, because then they're gonna have an idea of what their sales are like.
So this, this amount that, that's being asked for, that should cover that if...
Yeah.
If, if we decide to just waive it all?
Yeah, that's, I just want to explain why, it's not like, they're not asking for freebies, they're just kind of concerned too about what they'll make back.
Is council okay with waiving everything the first year?
Food vendors will make that back in twenty.
Councilman Hitchcock?
So you were originally saying that you, you thought it would be a twenty-thousand-dollar-ish range, would that still pretty much?
I think we're still within that, I was a little conservative in that number.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I agree, getting as many people out there this year as we can and just letting them know. You know, next year, we'll be a little bit different, depending on our turnout, you know, what the charges are gonna be. But our first year, we gotta do, we gotta do to get people out there.
All right, so he was, he was saying just to make sure that this is only for the first year, and we'll know more once the event is done, exactly what we're gonna do for the next years.
Yeah, we'll debrief with the council after this event to see how, how it went.
All right, so I'll make a motion to waive all fees and approve this. And I'll second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
I would aye.
Okay, we'll move on to announcements, city manager's announcements.
I know you guys are tired of hearing me talk tonight. I have two items, one, just wanted to give the council an update, as we, on the solar project at the water wastewater plant, we, we have our financing in line, and we did have our discussion with Moody's and went the Moody's route on our credit rating, and our credit rating is excellent. So, as we talked through the process and through the financing discussions, it's gonna save the, the city a lot of money, in the millions, in terms of what we'll have to actually finance as part of this project, so, good news. So, we should be closing on the financing for this project at the end of the month. So, and ratings look good, interest rates look good, so it's actually looking really good for the, the project. So like kind of almost the, the better-case scenario is happening right now, which is great.
Even though that the feds haven't lowered rates yet, it's still looks better than...
Bond market's really good right now.
Okay.
Yep. Just an update on this, your speed bumps, they, we have them in, and we'll be installing them in the next week or so. Yep, so there'll be two sets of speed bumps.
Okay, yeah, because I've got another neighborhood, we call them Pine Street, I know, Pine, yeah.
Yes, we have, we looked at some alternatives, but we found that this is the most cost-effective way to try and get people to slow down.
Thank you so much.
And the last one is, I was, I figured, people, it's probably on people's minds, you know, especially this morning when everyone got up and it was all smoky, so I was gonna have Greg give, give a little bit of an update on the, the Boone fire, and maybe the five other fires that I think popped up.
Yeah, sure, my pleasure, so it's not, it's not our incident, so I don't have as much information, it is a Cal Fire incident. But about three hours ago, the estimated acreage was approximately seventeen thousand acres, it's five percent contained. Incident management team two took over yesterday, and so things will get a lot better as far as sharing of information and stuff like that, they're very good, good with that. The PIO actually came by the station this afternoon and gave us a bunch of information. They're gonna put a sandwich board out in front of our facility, so if anybody wants the information, that's out there, but also, all of our social medias have been updated continuously throughout the day with everything that we're, we're receiving from either them, the sheriff's department, or the county. The city website was updated this afternoon, actually, the marquee banner at the top is now a link to all the information as well. Keck Center, a lot of questions that we've been getting at the fire department is about evacuations, and Red Cross, and where do we take our livestock and stuff, so I do have some information on that. The College Rodeo Grounds is open for livestock, and Red Cross is at the command post for anybody that needs assistance due, due to being evacuated. Also, the Keck Center, the Fitness Center, and the library are gonna be opening early for a combination of cooling centers and a clean air facility. The hours of Keck Hall is gonna be eight to five, Monday through Friday. The Fitness Center is gonna be five AM to nine PM, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday, it'll be nine AM to twelve PM. And then the library is, library's not on here, I believe the library was eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday as well. But all that information is on, on the fire departments, the police departments, and the city's social media pages. And then one last thing is our fire department operations. We have one ambulance up at the incident as a paramedic standby unit, and they will be doing twenty-four-hour rotations, and will remain there during the, during the duration of the incident. And then we have Engine one-seventy-one at the airport helabase, serving as a crash rescue resource, and they will also be on twenty-four-hour operations. With those two resources being gone, it does not affect our daily operations at all, we are still fully staffed. So I, that's all the information I really have, I could try and answer questions if you have any, but like I said, this is a Cal Fire incident, so we don't have much.
So, do we have, are our guys on the strike team as well?
So yeah, the strike team is the ambulance and the engine at the helabase. There is no other engine assigned as a fire suppression unit, though.
Okay, all right.
And that's it?
Okay, council have any announcements? Councilman Hitchcock, you have any announcements?
No, sir.
I have one, I have a couple.
Go ahead, Councilman Vosberg.
So John Duarte came to town, I want to thank him for coming. I, I asked a lot of tough questions, and he, he did a good job at answering all of them, and so I just really want to extend my appreciation for him coming to town. When the representative comes here and gives an open opportunity for people to talk to them, and to really get to know that person at the same time, ask tough questions, that's really nice to have that done. That being said, there's Joanna Rose Garcia, she's running, I think, for Assembly District Twenty-seven, and she's also gonna come to town. I don't know exactly what date she's, she's going to come, I don't know if she's gonna do just a town hall, or if she's gonna be walking, talking and knocking, but she is also coming, so I want to prepare people for that. And then, I want to thank the Kalinga Public Safety of police and for fire. I know you guys are getting a lot of questions from residents, and I know that it's weighing on everyone's mind, I mean, I've worked at the library, and I hear all the time people come in and say, you know, I just got an update right now from a guy that works with me, and he says, it's surrounding us, you know, so people are worried. And so I know you guys are catching that on both sides of police and fire, and so I just want to say that I appreciate that, and all you guys are doing to update the public and to, you know, put down some of those fears and whatnot, and so I just wanted to say that I really appreciate that, thank you.
Same with me, I'd just like to thank staff what they've been doing, police, fire, especially staff with the new changes, with everything, getting all the work, everything that's going on. Thank you for, Chief, police for even keeping up with the schools, you know, the schools are, you know, having kids, a lot of, you know, parents are worried about their kids, like, especially this morning. There's a lot of people here with asthma. Question that I've been asked is if the city's gonna provide masks, or we have masks, or anything like that.
I wasn't able to find Red Cross out there, when I went out there this morning after I had talked to you, have you heard anything on masks?
No, so I actually contacted Fresno County OES, EMS, and the Department of Health Services today, and they don't have any stock. We have a limited stock, but not for the public, unfortunately, it's gonna be more for city employees.
I've, I've reached out to a couple cities, I'm just waiting for them to respond, they said they had them, they just have to find them now, but they do have them.
Yeah, and the Red Cross was out there this afternoon, I went to the, I went to the afternoon briefing, and the Red Cross was there, so might have just hit, hit miss on when they're out there.
Okay, thank you, and thank you.
And I have no announcements. Any future agenda items at this time?
I have a couple. I would like to add a future agenda item that we continue to educate the public, understanding the survey that we just got makes me know that now that people that are educated about what's going on, or at least understand that this is an extension, it's not a new tax, that that's a huge difference. So I think that we should continue to use that company and to have them do another round, and continue, you know, there's a process that these companies do to educate the public, that way that we continue on up until the election, that way that we have a better chance of this passing. And then, I also have one of future agenda item, to extend the same courtesy to the rest of the properties that have the, that are out there on, that we did like the, the two-foot easements. It doesn't have to, I know that you're working on a lot of different things, and so just put it on your radar, it doesn't, it's not something that has to come back immediately. But I think that'd be nice for the residents out, that way if they want to extend their stuff, and it's not gonna take anything from the city to do it, it'd actually be, benefit both sides. And then the last one that I have is, I want to do some kind of like formal, I don't know if it's called a swearing-in, or at least some type of meet and greet, so that we can have the, the, and I don't want it to be like just a council meeting where, you know, hey, he puts his hand up, or hey, this, this and this. I want to have it be like a time to where we have city hall available to where people can come in, and we kind of allow them to be introduced to Sean as the interim city manager. That way we can get the public involved and whatnot.
I think that'd be more on your schedule, and then we go from there.
Yeah.
I guess I gotta be there, right?
That's all I have.
Any other items at this time? Councilman Hitchcock, any other items?
No, sir.
Don, you have any? Okay. I don't have any items at this time, with that being said, we've got three items tonight for closed session, meeting adjourned.